Well, good morning, everybody. Welcome to our Wednesday, October 2nd council meeting. It's nice to see that we have a full chambers this morning. I will call the meeting to order at 9:00 a.m. And I'll ask everybody to stand for the singing of our national anthem.
(Music) (Music)
Yes, Nathan, maybe time for a refresher and a change, right? Would be lovely. Does administration have any additions to the agenda this morning?
Administration has one addition to the agenda. 9.6 for the administration. Oh, let's just pull it up here. Facilities, Town Facilities Rules of Conduct Policy Update.
Under Decision Item 9.6, we'll add it too. Okay. And there is one addition to the agenda from Council, too, which will be a closed item for the CAO retirement. We'll have that as Decision Item 9.1. So two additions, 9.1 and 9.6. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda for the October 2nd, 2024 Regular Meeting of Council as amended for Decision Item 9.1 and with the addition of 9.6? Counselor Clark, thank you very much. All in favor? That is carried. Any corrections or amendments to the September 18th, 2024 Meeting of Council minutes? Can I get a motion to adopt those minutes? Counselor Kamana, thank you very much. All in favor? That is carried. We have no proclamations this morning. We do have one public hearing. The public hearing is for Drayton Valley Municipal Development Bylaw, 2024-02D dash, I guess that's it, just D. And I will declare the public hearing open at 9:03 a.m. For bylaw number 2024-02-D for the Town of Drayton Valley Municipal Development Plan. Those present today are administration, members of the public, those online, council, and myself. The purpose of the public hearing is to receive comment, concerns, and questions from the public regarding the proposed refresh to the current MDP bylaw, 2012-27D as amended. The above bylaw received first reading on August 21st, 2024, at the regular meeting of council, and it may receive second and third reading today, depending on the comments that are received today at the public hearing. There have been no written submissions received by the town at the time of the writing of the council report on September 24th, 2024. I will now call for administration to present their report.
Good morning, Madam Mayor, members of council. I just want to do a quick overview of the bylaw being presented today. And just to kind of give counsel a little outline of what we've gone through in order to get to this point today. So looking at the purpose of the refresh, it had four items that we wanted to deal with as part of this bylaw. First was to update the bylaw in terms of the current regulations, in terms of the Municipal Government Act. It's important to understand that the town currently has a municipal development plan. What we're doing is we're looking at all the policies. We are updating all the policies, ensuring that they are relevant and reflect council's current direction. We wanted to make sure that we engage the public as part of this so that they had an opportunity to provide us with input. We wanted to also look at the document itself to make sure that, you know, can we make it look better and more presentable, easier to read? And so that was really the intent of the exercise. In terms of the process, we're at the final stage here of the process. We're going through initiating to engaging, to getting feedback, to crafting the amendments. And then finally, now we're here at a point where we're having the formal adoption process and the formal public hearing in which to engage the public formally. So in terms of what we've gone through, in terms of trying to engage the public, we've gone through setting up web portals and information on the web portal and constantly updating that as we're kind of going through the process. We've had online surveys in which to engage the public. We've also had those physical surveys where people could come in and fill out those surveys as well. We've engaged with council and administration to try and get your feedback on us. We've advertised it in the local media as well as online in terms of social media itself. We've had two drop-in sessions, one in October and one in December. We've also engaged the Youth Advisory Committee as well for feedback. We've had another open house then in August of this year. We've set up opportunities for the public to provide their feedback in terms of online comments as we've gone through both engagements as well. Council gave a first reading. And as part of first reading, there were some comments that came back from council. We've incorporated those comments in terms of some of the photos, in terms of some of the text changes. We've incorporated that into the draft. And so when the recommendation comes forward for second reading, we'll have it as amended to reflect council's changes. And so getting into a little bit about what the bylaw actually looks like. It's broken out into a number of different sections relating to background, dealing with demographics, you know, trends that are in the community. Vision statement that we've gathered from the public input includes a couple of policy areas, generally policies dealing with land use constraints. How do we deal with utilities? How do we deal with infrastructure? How do we deal with different land uses? And then it also deals with a section for policies dealing with community resilience. And that's really an update on your community sustainability and really updating that to what the current model for community resilience is. And then lastly, a section dealing with implementation and how do you actually implement the municipal development plan? More specifically, and when we look at the policy areas, dealing with everything from constraints to dealing with residential areas, the commercial areas, industrial areas, community services and community infrastructure such as parks, recreation, those type of things, more physical infrastructure such as transportation, roadways, and those type of things, looking at the future areas, the urban reserve areas, what policy should be there? How do we interact with our neighbors through the IDP? And then community resilience. In the implementation side, looking at how you actually monitor, it's important to actually monitor the municipal development plan over time through short term, through an annual basis, and then through a more detailed review every five to seven years, making sure that your other policy documents are aligned with the municipal development plan, making sure that this municipal development plan stays consistent with your intermunicipal development plan. And then setting out a process so that when you do get new area structure plans, they have a process by which to follow and contents that should be in those. And looking at community partnerships because, you know, the municipal development plan can't be implemented alone by council or administration. It needs the community and community understanding to implement things, whether it's through committees or through cooperation with other organizations. And then finally, one of the implementation mechanisms for implementing the MDP is the land use bylaw. And so it identifies what needs to be done as far as the land use bylaw. And so coming out of this, obviously, we're at the public hearing stage right now where we hope to hear from anybody that may have any concerns or wish to express any opinions about the municipal development plan. And then following in Section 9.1, dealing with, there'll be two recommendations. One, that second reading be given as amended, and then third reading be given. So at this point, if there's any questions of clarification on what I've presented to council, be happy to answer those. Otherwise, then I turn it back over to you, Madam Mayor.
Perfect. Thank you very much for that, Mr. Vanna. So I think what I'll do first is I'll call for any comments from anyone from the floor this morning. Are there any comments from anyone online? Then I'll declare the public hearing closed at 9:12 a.m. Thank you very much for that. And we'll jump into that a little bit later for the second and third reading. Next up this morning, we have with us our delegation. The delegation is the Youth Advisory Committee. And we are very excited to see you here this morning, and we welcome you down to the podium. So welcome and good morning.
And any other people interested in coming to speak to us, we would love to grow our knowledge and also give our input. And that is an open invitation. You can contact Lola Strand. She's been helping us set up our delegations. So as well, another stakeholder we've identified is the University of Alberta. They're doing a study called Working to Foster Healthy Community Futures in Rural Alberta. So the University of Alberta is interested in observing the role of the community in development of our town. And with our committee being quite new, they do have a full perspective of kind of like how we've created, why, what purpose we serve, and how we're navigating these challenges that we do face day to day. So by participating in the study, we're able to provide examples for them to kind of help facilitate the change in other communities as well. And we do believe like one helps all, kind of. So we're enjoying our participation in the study. And representative from the university has attended most of our meetings and they're collecting the data that they need. We have also started a project to interview local businesses in our town who have services for youth, which includes some of our stakeholders. This section of our strategic plan is a helpful reference and guide to remind us who we are working for. We work for the town, we try to help the town. So it's a good reminder to make light of some of the services and programs that the town offers for me before we try and implement any new upcoming ideas that we do have. So we have done a couple of interviews with the although our main form of media is our social media platform. We have gained significant traction on Facebook, Instagram, and TikTok. So social media platforms is the most, like our main way of engaging with the youth. Everyone is on social media, most of them are. So although we do we do have our more traditional media that we have done as well to make sure that all people can have access to what we have to say. We are in the process of getting our own subpage on the town's website. It's taken a little longer to collect all our information to put it in, but we're on track for it. So hopefully, we can get that up and running in the near future. And as a committee, we have given our input on some of the municipal development plan and the land use bylaws. We've given our input on the CETC rebrand and education plan, and a couple of our members have taken the interactive budget tool. Although in our actual strategic plan, we do have a section that says engage with the town's budget. I do want to be clear that we won't be following through with this point because we aren't educated enough to speak on the budget, which is why we want to have you come in and talk to us about the budget so we can start exploring more ideas and how we can help transfer the youth perspective into like bigger change. So throughout the year, we have used the document to lead us in our right direction and kind of keep us on track. Thank you.
Our 2024 survey has received a lot more positive feedback than our 2023 survey. We have reached all ages from 11 and younger to 60 and older. Majority of our responses have been from ages 12 to seven, which is the demographic we hope to reach. Our first question is, do you feel you are provided with the right facilities in Drayton Valley? 50% of people said yes. 38.8% said sometimes. 11.3% said no. We then asked what facilities they use most. Our top answer was fast food. The second, the second most was restaurants. And our third most used was the pool. Do you feel connected to Drayton Valley? 53.1% said yes. 32.1% said sometimes. And 14.8% said no. Do you feel pride in Drayton Valley? 46.3% said yes. 35.4% said sometimes. And 18.3% said no. Our final questions were, do you feel there are services in the town that provide proper support? 59.8% said they feel they are provided with support. 25.6% said sometimes. And 14.6% said no. And we asked, we then asked, what services do you use the most? Majority of the people said dental service was the most, the service they use most. The second most used was the hospital and healthcare. Third was emergency services.
And then our last little section of what's next. So we're going to continue getting into the schools to get more engagement from our youth in the schools. We're hoping to do a panel discussion similar to the RISE event so that we can ask the community as a whole, no matter if you're within our targeted age group or not. We want to get the full community perspective. We are going to continue editing our interviews and hopefully have them posted. We have had a setback with our editing software. So we're looking into different options as well. And then we're looking into different grants and applicable funds that we can get for some projects that we do have in mind. We will continue looking at the services that we already have in town so that we can try and streamline some of our ideas into some of those and if need be, create our own. And if we have any questions, I would be happy to answer some of them.
Well, wonderful. Great job. That was a fantastic presentation and a lot of information. Thank you very much for that. I will open it up for questions from council. Counselor Kamana?
Thank you, and thank you very much and good morning for your presentation. Thank you very much. Just wanted to say that, you know, I was fortunate enough to be part of the YAC a couple of years ago when you were starting up, right? And it looks like that you guys have come a long way. Presentation was excellent. The work that you're doing is excellent. And the input you are giving to the town is valued as well, right? So just wanted to make that comment and just to say that I think, I see your posts on social media all the time, which is fantastic. And that's the, I guess, exposure that you guys are looking for. So just, you know, keep doing what you're doing and you're doing a fantastic job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor McGee?
I'm going to start off with a tough question. What was your perspective on our unhoused and homeless community? And do you have a solution?
We haven't had like a solution. We basically discussed the options that are available in town and how we can help the people who might need to get access to some of these housing. And just if it's working for us, if we think youth, it's attainable for youth to, if they're in that low income poverty kind of line, and just different options that the town does provide.
And I ask you because we, nobody seems to have the solution, so it's
It is tricky.
Your perspective, though, is really important to have as Counselor Kamana is saying. And I have been part of RISE as well. I actually was able to go to South Africa with the resilience in youth. And so it's interesting. So when I think of the Youth Advisory Committee, and then I think of the Youth Hub, and I think of Kickstart and those kinds of things, are we connecting with those groups as well?
We are hoping to, yes. We are hoping to bring some of them in as our delegations to kind of connect and see where we can help each other, so.
And then, of course, my comments coming into the council chambers were, is this our next town council? And I don't say that lightly. It is what it's about. It's about leadership and it's about, it's about understanding the community and being part of the community. And so I'm empathetic with your apathy question because I think it's difficult these days. It's difficult with my own kids. So, and they're 40s. I don't know. But I applaud you attempting to do that as a committee. And I like the volunteering piece. And I liked your point when you said we work for the town. And it hadn't occurred to me that that would be a line that you would use. But tell me a little bit more, why you think that?
Well, when assessing all our stakeholders and all of the different people, so in our actual document, we defined it. And that's anyone who has an interest in our purpose, our our committee, like in anything that we are doing. So it's the town, the youth of the town, all these businesses and all these local places who do have an interest in our community. They do have an interest in what we're trying to do, what we're trying to discover, and all these different things. So we are trying to make change in our town for these people.
Well said. At least, thank you, thank you to all of you that came today. That's absolutely outstanding. Thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Evans?
Really, just a couple of comments as the other counselors. Very well spoken, ladies. Thank you very much for the time that you're spending improving our town. I guess food is kind of a common theme there to get people to participate. We might want to advertise some better food at our MPP next time. So yeah, I just want to thank you. It's, it is important work that you're doing, and we on council appreciate that time that you're taking and the hard work that you're putting in. As you've seen, engagement is, is difficult, and you see that at sort of all levels with us engaging and getting the community to participate is difficult, but you're having success. Keep doing what you're doing, and I look forward to seeing the progress that I'm sure you're going to make moving forward.
Thank you. Thank you.
Counselor Clark?
Yes, and to echo everybody, yeah, great job. If I was up there at your age, I'd be shaking like a leaf. So, good job. One question is, I think you guys have some county folks, you know, kids that live in the county on this committee, correct?
Yes, we do.
And do you guys engage the county at all? Like, will you go to Brazier County Council and do the same presentation?
We have been discussing different ideas and topics. Our kind of perspective on it is if you are in Drayton Valley and if you are using the facilities that the town provides, we would consider you a town youth. So just like if it's town council, you have to live like in town, be a member of Drayton Valley. We don't think that's applicable because not everyone can choose where they live, but they're using Drayton Valley facilities in their day to day lives, and Drayton Valley is a part of their home. So, but we are working on discussing different options with the county, not directly yet. We're asking Lola about a couple of things. So she's been our main support person and really helping navigate this more professional and adult world for our committee. So we're doing our best to try.
Yeah, we have trouble navigating an adult world too. But I do think that'd be a great idea. I think that like a lot of county folks, there's a lot of overlap there, like town folks use, you know, the Nordic trails, for instance, stuff like that, right? So there's a lot of overlap, and I do see a lot of value there.
It is something that we've noticed, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, might be a good idea to present to them as well, for sure, and, you know, get a little bit of support there. So just a couple of questions from me. Who created your logo for the Youth Advisory Committee?
It was our graphic team members. Serenity Cardinal, Tony Thompson is on graphics team. I can't remember if anyone else. It was preexisting before I came into the committee, but they really wanted to use like the oil derricks and like the red and kind of keep it like our fingerprint as a town.
Yeah, it's pretty cool. It looks really, yeah, really, really unique and creative. Good job there. And then just another question. What are some of your ideas to feel more connected to Drayton Valley? Like, that was one of the survey questions. So as the Youth Advisory Committee, do you have ideas to get the youth more connected?
Well, there's the general like go out and do events and connect with like the community and a big like party, I don't want to say, but that's kind of like a gathering. Like, we have like the street party that's not, it's targeted for like the entire community, but not specifically youth. Like, we want, we're looking into different things that like youth specifically would love to come and do. So.
Yeah, and I think it's good for us to keep in mind too, if we have something that's happening, a party or a celebration, to, you know, maybe invite you to, to get that.
Yeah, we would love to. We've set up a booth at our summer ween, so that's a way that we got more engagement, handed a couple candies, dressed up, and it was a good community event.
Oh, good, good. And then also, you have, I imagine you have a lot of followers on social media. You've got TikTok and Instagram and Facebook. How often are you putting out videos and, I guess, media?
We are trying to get more regular with it. Over the summer, you know, we're all busy. We had a hard time kind of finding like the groove during summer, but now that it's school time, everyone's back to routine, we're hoping for more regular posts. One or two a month until we get more consistently. Hopefully, we can be posting more regularly.
Perfect, thank you very much for that. And I think what I'll do is hand it over to Ms. Lola Strand. I think she has a few comments for you as well this morning.
Perfect. Yeah, as you can see, I think the future of Drayton Valley is in excellent hands with this group of young people. We kind of asked, I think, for a better, more engaged group of young people representing all the youth in our community. They're truly passionate and independent, and yeah, I think you're right, Counselor McGee. They could be up there one day. I really believe that. The leadership that they're showing already is amazing. I just wanted to offer just a couple of points from, as was mentioned, we have delegations that come in to each meeting. I just wanted to offer some feedback that will express from others how much value these young people are adding to decision making and things that concern all of us in our community. So we had Darlene Ferris come in from Wildrose School Division. She said that this is a great idea, that giving youth a voice in the community is critical. This group was very well aware of what was going on in their community and easily identified gaps in services and resources. It was such a valuable opportunity to share our family wellness stats with them, as well as identify trends and patterns of issues that they were not necessarily aware of in order to better advocate for their peers. They were very well spoken, such an impressive group. We enjoyed our time with them for sure. I have some feedback from Mr. Peter Vanna. As he mentioned, he did engage the Youth Advisory Committee to offer their input into the municipal development plan. Their feedback and ideas expressed by the committee were used in from a division statement for the municipal, sorry, Municipal Development Plan Bylaw coming forward or did come forward today. And other comments from the committee were also incorporated into the plan. He said that he appreciated the feedback and input provided by the committee very much. And Mr. Van Claver said, for me, the interaction with this group of engaged youth members of our community was energizing. It showed that they are an important representation of a demographic that is, is and shapes our future. Listening to and working with them makes us as administration stronger and more successful in what we do and deliver. And when Mr. Cooney came in and presented about the education plan, this group is definitely strong advocates of the Sarah Fee tuition program, and it was noted that they have sent many referrals over that way. So they're just ambassadors for our education future too. So, so yeah, I just wanted to share that and looking forward to the next year with this group. And just a note, we do still have a couple of vacancies. Membership is advertised right now, so if you know another young person that would like to join this group, please make sure that they fill out an application.
Well, thank you very much, Lola. Counselor McGee, do you have one more question?
Just one more question, and it's directed to you, Lola, in regards to conversation around grants. We are working with Alberta Council, as you know, writing, you know, they're able to do those sorts of things, and I'm assuming that you've connected all those dots. And my guess is that there is dollars available from the province, even federal money, that could help with the things that, going forward.
Yeah, absolutely. Actually, I did want to mention one more thing, although Mr. Chase Combs, although he wasn't able to be here today, I just wanted to share, he was also instrumental in the development of this group. He's been a longtime volunteer with us. He was the youth, first he was our FCSS Board Youth Rep. He became the Youth Rep on the RISE Committee. He traveled to South Africa with us. He was instrumental in the development of this group and has stayed a long term volunteer with us for about, I think, the past ten years. He was unable to be here because he's busy finding a place to live in Edmonton as he has got a job with the municipality of Smoky Lake. So he will be leaving us, and I knew his path would go, take him that way. So I just wanted to share that. I wish he could have been here so that we could have offered our thanks and with him here.
Perfect, well, thank you. Well, thank you very much. That was wonderful again. You all did a fantastic job. It was nice seeing you this morning, and we look forward to seeing you again soon. Can I get one picture with all of you together with big smiles before you go? Oh, would you like to do it up here with council? I notice on your statement of purpose, you have one there. Can I give this to you too, Lola? Maybe I think Lola, you should be in here. Well, thank you very much again. So what we'll do before we go into break is we will move into our decision items. First up is nine point one decision item, which is a closed edition. And I will need a motion from council to move us into closed, please. Counselor Sheriff, thank you very much for that. All in favor? That is carried. And if we could just vacate the council. Decision item is, oh, are we on? Perfect, okay. Nine point one decision item is a CAO retirement. I'd like to bring to your attention, after much thought and consideration, Mr. Wally Ferris has notified us that he will be retiring from municipal services. It comes as a bit of a surprise, but I'm sure that the decision wasn't easy, and we wish him all of the best in his next chapter of retirement. Is there a member of council would like to make a motion to accept Mr. Ferris's notice of retirement, please? Counselor Clark?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that council accept Mr. Wally Ferris's notice of retirement effective October 2nd, 2024.
Thank you very much for that. Any comment, question, debate on the motion? I would just say that I want to thank Wally for all he's done to lead the team in the short time that he was here, and we wish him and his family all of the best. I think that with the lovely fall weather that we're having, he'll be able to enjoy a few more golf days and plenty of hunting. So if there's no further comment, question, or debate, I will call the motion. All in favor? That is carried, and we'll have a second motion this morning to appoint an acting CAO. Is there a member of council would like to make this motion, please? Counselor Sheriffs?
I'll make the motion to council point Mr. Hans Van Claver as acting CEO and Ms. Elvira Thompson as assistant CEO for the town of Drayton Valley, effective October 2nd, 2024.
Thank you very much for this. Any comment, question, debate on the motion? Just like to say, thank you very much for Hans and Elvira taking this on. We appreciate it. I have every confidence that you'll both do a fantastic job and looking forward to working with you over the next little while as we move into the next stages of looking for an interim CAO. There's no further comment, question, debate. I'll call the motion all in favor. That is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And what we'll do now is we will move along in the agenda, and we have nine point two manhole rental rates. We have Mr. Hans Van Claver. And oh, sorry, that's right. Okay, I did skip over that. You're right. We have Mr. Peter Vanna. Nine point two is the Drayton Valley Municipal Development Plan 2024-02D for second and third reading this morning. I was wondering why you were going to be delivering the manhole rental rates.
It's not that I don't like manholes, don't get me wrong. Well, Madam Mayor, I'd really like to talk about the MDP.
That'd be wonderful, thank you.
Well, Madam Mayor, Bylaw 24 dash zero two dash D is the Municipal Development Plan Bylaw and is presented to council for a second reading. The amendments that I mentioned at the public hearing were that there were some text changes made to the document as mentioned by council during the initial reading. And we made some additional photo changes for, including the oil industry and lumber industry that were included into the document as well. In addition, there's, there's one change I want to mention on page 11. Two point four, just the word Youth Advisory Council, change that to Youth Advisory Committee. And that includes all the changes being suggested. So with that, Madam Mayor, the recommendation from administration is that council give Bylaw 24 dash two dash D second reading as amended, and then followed by third reading.
Perfect, thank you very much for that. Are there any questions for Mr. Vanna this morning? Counselor Gomana?
Good morning, Savannah. Thank you very much for, I guess, bringing this back to council. I know that we went through a long process to get here. I'm just wondering about, we had some open houses, I believe, to get feedback from the community. Would you go through that experience and how much of a participation we got from the community and what kind of feedback?
Sure. So, Madam Mayor, we had two open houses, one originally when we were looking for initial feedback on the community's vision and educating the community on what a municipal development plan was. Community response was light, I'm going to say. We probably had half a dozen people that showed up to the, to the event. It was a five hour event. And in addition to that, we had online surveys, and the online surveys were good. The meetings with council and the Youth Advisory Committee were really good in terms of getting the feedback that we needed for putting together the vision statement in the municipal development plan. And then, once we had the draft done, we had a second open house. At that, that was a little less attended. There was two people that attended over a four hour period. And in terms of online surveys, we didn't receive any surveys back from, from the community. The one, I guess the one question we did have during the public engagement was, is there anything in the plan that talks about fifteen minute cities? And the simple answer is no. There's nothing in this document that contains anything that discusses fifteen minute cities. One, because we're not a city, we're a town, and you can get anywhere in five minutes if you really need to. So, you know, it's, it's a totally relevant concept for, for this municipality. And so there's nothing in here that contains anything to that extent. Really, that was about the only. Really, that was about the only meaningful one. There was a few that talked about and actually, you know, getting mixed up with the Landy's bylaw because we've also had the second open house for the Landy's bylaw as well. And so we've had, actually, for the Landy's bylaw, we had some good feedback relative to the Landy's bylaw. And so that really concludes my comments on the community feedback. It's probably typical unless you have a lightning rod issue that deals with, you know, intense growth pressures in a community and which way the town's going to grow and that type of thing. You don't normally get a lot of attendance at these things.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Counselor Clark?
So hypothetically, let's say we do second and third readings today. What are the next steps after that? I'm assuming our land development group has some work to do.
Madam Mayor, so the next steps, I mean, obviously, on October 16th, we'll bring forward the Landy's bylaw for first reading. That's our next step with, you know, open to public comment for probably at least a month and a half. We won't bring it back until December. Which time we'll have the public hearing for that. In terms of the municipal development plan, there's obviously next steps in terms of trying to set up a program for reviewing the area's structure plans and making sure that those are brought up to date. Looking at procedures when it comes to dealing with the intermunicipal development plan, that type of thing. And obviously, as part of, there's a number of work items that are in the municipal development plan that need to be put on. And it's a lot of that conversation with with the administration in terms of, you know, when do you see bringing those forward in terms of the budget process or any of those type of things? There's dollars associated with that.
Perfect. If there's no other questions, is there a member of council would like to make a motion for second reading as amended? Counselor McGee?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would make a motion that council give municipal development plan bylaw 2024-02D second reading.
Thank you very much for that. Any comment, question, debate on the motion? Then I'll ask all in favor. That is carried. Is there a member of council would like to make a motion for third and final reading? Counselor Comanna?
Thank you. I'll make a motion that council gives municipal development plan bylaw 2024-02D third and final reading. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Any comment, question, debate on the motion? Just like to thank Mr. Peter Vanna for putting together this document. I know it takes a long time and a lot of policy and everything else. It looks wonderful and it's a great job. Hopefully, we see a lot of future growth in our community and it would be nice to actually be able to see, you know, in the next five to seven years, it's changed significantly. So we can only hope that we will grow and expand. And yeah, just thank you again for the document. There's no further comment, question, debate, then I'll call the motion. All in favor. That is carried. Thank you very much. Next up now is nine point three, which is the manhole rental rates. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Mayor and Council. At the beginning of 2024, administration was directed by council to look into the costs associated with payments made to county landowners with access hatches on their properties. The town of Drayton Valley has access hatches, or more commonly referred to as manholes, located all along the storm and sanitary lines throughout town. Thirty-four of these hatches are located on private property in the county. Starting in 1977, which was the first payment I could find on record, the town began paying rental fees to those private county landowners to have manholes on their property. The rates with various landowners have been negotiated up and down through the years. However, the average rate is $150 per access hatch per year. Since 2008, the town has paid almost $90,000 to these sixteen landowners in the county for an annual average of almost $6,000. Outside of costs associated with the initial installation of these access hatches, it is not common practice for communities to pay a rental fee for infrastructure located on private property. And I'll open it up for questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Go ahead, Counselor Evans.
Thank you for this, Bree. Yeah, it was, I requested the information and really it's just with budget coming up, I was just curious as to how much we were we were paying in the end for these numerous agreements. It's it's less than I expected, to be honest with you. Is there any other additional pieces to these agreements that are that we are paying? Again, I don't want to I don't want administration to have to put in a ton of work to dig up a bunch of numbers. I was really, I'm just curious about what what the total dollars are that we're spending every year on these various agreements all over town. So if this is the final number, great. My curiosity has been satisfied. If there's a total number out there, I'd be curious to know what that is. Fair enough?
Red or green? Am I on or off? Green. Okay. Sorry. Thank you for the question. We're still looking through all the records. We will bring another report. We just know we could find this one pretty easy. But we're still digging through all the other stuff. Yeah.
Great. And again, keep it simple. It's just, I'm just curious about the about the number and again, it just ties in with our budget time and I'm just trying to get a handle on those monies that were that were kind of having to throw at these every year. Again, that seems quite low to me. So, you know, it's not a big concern at this point. But when you manage to gather all that information, yeah. Again, a short, simple report is great. Thank you.
Counselor Comanna?
Thank you. And thank you, Bree, for bringing this forward as well. Just on the final sentence, it says that it is not common practice for a community to pay rental fees.
That's correct.
What would be the common practice and is there a possibility us to get there?
Commonly, landowners are compensated when the infrastructure is first installed, but after that, there's no further payments. And Jelling?
Yeah, they generally enter into a right-of-way agreement with us and then there'd be a one-time payment. I think that the stipulation here is we're running through county property, not town-owned properties. So there is other right-of-ways through town that we don't pay compensation yearly for.
Okay, so it's something that we've been doing towards at some point.
Well, it's a little difficult because it is the South Sanitary Trunk Line. It's our main line that feeds the entire town sewer system to our wastewater plant. So getting out of this is, there's no way to at this point.
Thank you.
Any other questions for administration? Go ahead, Counselor Evans.
Then this early question, but the, you know, the only if this was very high, if it was costing us a lot of money every year, then I think it would be worth us considering as a council, say, a realignment. You know, that's really the only way that we're going to avoid that cost. But in my mind, the numbers that are here right now, the cost to realign that main is significant, to say the least. So, yeah. And that's, that's all I was wanting to look at is, you know, what are the options? Should we pursue any options? And at this point in time, you know, the dollars are low enough that I don't think it really makes any sense. So.
Thank you for that. Any other questions for administration? Is there a member of council like to make a motion to accept this information, please? Counselor Evans?
I'll make the motion that council accepts the manhole rental rates report as outlined in A I R 24 dash 215 as information only. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Comment, question, debate on the motion? I'll call the motion. All in favor. That is carried. Next up on the agenda, we have nine point four, which is the reallocation of A T A funds to community safety fund. Mr. Rossing, good morning.
Good morning, everyone. Probably the shortest agenda item I've ever had. So during the September 12th, 2024 Community Safety Committee meeting, the committee supported reallocating funds from the Automated Traffic Enforcement Fund to the Community Safety Fund. So the Automated Traffic Enforcement Fund was created when the town of Drayton Valley had automated traffic enforcement. As per the policy that has since been repealed, the purpose of the fund was to use revenues from the A T E to pay for safety enhancements within the community. After the automated traffic enforcement seized within the town, some funds were spent. The policy was repealed. However, there's a balance remaining of $6,273.74. So administration is proposing, at the recommendation of the Community Safety Committee, to transfer the funds to the safety, Community Safety Fund to continue to be able to be used for safety projects identified by the committee and approved by council. Should this change be approved by council, administration will have the ability to close the traffic safety, sorry, the Automated Traffic Enforcement Fund after transferring the money. So the recommendation for the motions is that council direct administration to transfer the balance of the Automated Traffic Enforcement Fund to the Community Safety Fund and that council direct administration to close the Automated Traffic Enforcement Fund. That's my presentation.
Thank you very much for that. Any questions? Counselor Clark?
Not really a question. I'm part of that Community Safety Committee and, you know, that money's just been sitting there since it's closed, doing nothing. So we thought the best place for it, per Cody's request, was to throw it into that essentially the Travis Fund rate is where we're putting it. So I think it makes sense rather than it sitting there doing nothing.
Counselor Comanna, do you have a question?
I do. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
So just wondering, the A T E fund is there, but it's dormant per se now, right? And then we're just moving into Travis Fund. I believe that we've allocated Travis Funds for some projects already, just for the community's benefit. Could you go through a few projects that you've done through Travis Fund this year?
Yeah. So last month, I believe it was, the council has approved up to $31,000 for a couple of speed signs. They actually just arrived yesterday, the speed display signs. So just got to go through the configuration and install of those. The allocation of money towards the curb or the cement curbs to be going at the Omniplex. So we've put a deposit on those. So we're getting those built and made. And then lastly, the purchase of the reflective stripes for the stop signs and crosswalks. So we're just working with some vendors right now to finalize the pricing on that and get those ordered. It's about a seven-day turnaround whenever we do pull the trigger and go forward. So, yeah, those are approved last month and we're working towards getting those brought in and installed and moved forward. So this would just add that additional $6,200 into that fund to be able to be used for similar kind of safety projects throughout the community.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Evans?
So the, yeah, this makes sense to me. Does anything else go into that safety fund? I'm just curious. Like, where do the revenues from, say, the tickets that are written go? Do they go just into general revenues? They don't go into this fund?
Yeah, so there's different G L codes that end up, my understanding is, into general revenues from fines, whether they're bylaw fines, whether they're provincial fines, those are separate from the Community Safety Fund.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
If there's no other questions, is there a member of council would like to make a motion, please? Counselor Sheriffs?
I made the motion that council direct administration to transfer the balance of the Automated Traffic Enforcement Fund to the Community Safety Fund as outlined in A I R 24, 2019, and that council direct administration to close the Automated Traffic Enforcement Fund.
Thank you very much for that. Any comment, question, debate on the motion? Then I'll call all in favor. That is carried. And I think what I'll do is I'll call a 10-minute break since I forgot to call one when we moved into closer and we'll reconvene in 10 minutes and jump back into decision item nine point five.
At 10:28. And next up is the financial software upgrades.
Thank you.
Thank you, Valvera.
So last year, our team received news that our current accounting financial software was coming to its end of life. Our current software is Serenic by Sillogist. This means that we are required to upgrade to their new solution, Sillogist Gov, or search for a new financial system provider. Administration is confident that the best solution for the organization would be to upgrade to Sillogist Gov. It is the most similar to our current software, which allows for the implementation, training and conversion to go as smoothly as possible. Additionally, there are extensive number of improvements and upgrades to the software that will improve the efficiencies within the finance department and the organization as a whole. This would allow for more reporting options for managers and less downtime following regularly scheduled updates. From beginning to the end, the implementation and training process takes approximately a year. With the deadline for the end of service from Serenic coming up in December of 2025, it leaves us with a tight schedule to manage. Administration is requesting approval from council to sign a memorandum of agreement or understanding with Endeavor Solutions. This will allow us to start the planning phase of the project as well as guarantee the currently quoted price. The project will be included in the 2025 operating budget. Endeavor Solution is a software consulting firm specializing in software support and implementation. For our circumstances, upgrading to Sillogist Gov, Endeavor would handle the setup, configuration, data conversion, training and ongoing support. The quoted range right now is anywhere between 233,000 and 251,000. And just so that I can explain what we're doing here today, this is going to be included in 2025 budget. However, this is required and the planning absolutely needs to get started immediately for us to be able to make that one-year implementation and support is being cut back in the spring. And if we sign a memorandum of agreement with Endeavor for the conversion, they will also support us through the period of time that Serenic is pretty much washing their hands of us. So that allows us to start planning immediately. And then the item will be in the 2025 budget so that it will be covered by the taxes through there, which makes it so that council doesn't have to commit any reserves this year for this project. Yeah. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. And I also have Connor here to help answer questions as well. He's been very involved in this project.
Thank you very much for that. Any questions for Ms. Thompson this morning? Counselor Clark?
So do we have to follow any sort of R F P process with this?
Because it's an upgrade, we did a fair amount of work to see what was out there. But because it was an upgrade, this is the alternative route. So that if council allows me to sign this M L U, then that's the other route that we can follow outside of an R F P. But some municipalities do R F P for this, some don't, depending on if, I guess, the timeline and if they're upgrading or converting to a new software.
Right. So will the bulk of this, you know, maximum $251,920 go to Endeavor? Or is that, so 251 goes to Endeavor, what about the Sillogist?
So they will, so everything goes to them and they will, so that includes year one of the actual software. And then we'll have the ongoing software, but everything will go through Endeavor now because previously, the way our current software is, Serenic built the software and is also supporting it. Now that they've built this new software, they say that they're out of the support game. They will no longer be supporting their own software. They're simply selling it. So Endeavor is our support, is who's going to support us throughout the year. We probably contact Serenic for one thing or another, like probably almost weekly or a variety of different issues. So we definitely need somebody to support us. We need to have somebody that we can call if something isn't working. That's what Endeavor is going to be. So they're going to implement and they're like the in-between. So they buy the software and provide it. And they're like the in between. So they buy the software and provide it to us.
Now, I guess my next question is, so if Serenics go in the way of the dodo, how do we capture all of that information? Is it transferred over to the new software?
Correct. That's the most biggest part of this cost is to integrate everything, implement our, I can't remember what the word, but put everything into the new software and have several years of history in there and and just get all the ledgers set up and stuff, which is very, very time consuming. But they will be doing that.
So how long have we been using Serenic? Is it like ten years or?
Well, so we it went from Bellamy to Serenic. And I want to say two thousand and two thousand nine? Does that sound right? I think around two thousand nine. So, yeah, so we've been fifteen years or so that we've been using this software, but it was the same provider. Bellamy was the same provider. Just upgraded as well at that time. So, I mean, it's not always that it turns over in fifteen years, but I wouldn't, I also don't think that's an unreasonable amount of time, just because so much changes in fifteen years that it's even now, like if even if we're required to, like, I don't know if I would spend this much amount of money, like, just by choice. But it will be really nice to capture some of these upgrades and especially when it comes to controls and some customer service things. Like allowing us to have pictures and stuff attached to properties, like there's a bunch of cool new upgrades in this. So sure, we're forced into this, sort of, is kind of what it is, but the the new software will be really nice as well. It will benefit us for sure.
Okay, two more questions. One, do we have a view as to what the shelf life is on this?
No, unfortunately.
And then lastly, does this at all integrate with our what do you call it, the
Asset Management?
Yeah.
They are, right now, it doesn't, but they are working with Citywide to potentially integrate. There is not, it's not on the top of my list for things that would make our life that much easier right now. It's not asset management or the ways that they overlap. There, I don't know that there's a huge need for that to integrate. However, because I've heard it a few times now, they are looking at potentially integrating it, but they do integrate with a number of other solutions, like with ActiveNet, which is our point of sale system at our rec facilities and just a just a number of other ones they do currently integrate with. Citywide is on the list to come up at some point in the future.
Okay, I mean, it's at least a possibility, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, I've worked with SAP in the past, which is it's an absolute beast, but but those were integrated, right? And it was important because you could see exactly what it costs for you know, to run that facility.
For sure. And right now, all that information is in asset management and at the end of the year, we integrate it into our financial system. So, yeah, but I I do agree it is integration is very important when it comes to our financial software. I was going to think of there's another integration.
Regardless, I mean, it seems like a robust system and we can.
My preferred budget solution, they do integrate with Serenic or Sillogist, which is really good, because that's going to come up in the next probably next year where I want to have a system for budgeting, because it is really time consuming the way we do it now. But integrating them both at the same time is, it's probably not the best idea, but I already know that the software I want to use and that many, many municipalities that I've heard from use, it does integrate with Sillogist. So that's really good, too.
Council Commander?
Thank you. So to ask a little bit of a, I guess, a half technical question. When I look at the Endeavor Solutions, it seems that, you know, the the software that we are going to purchase is based out of Microsoft Dynamics and usually there are other providers that you know, plays on the same space. Did we reach out to any other company other than Endeavor to see if there's any different, I guess, costs that they can give, or did, I guess, the previous company recommended Endeavor to us?
Sorry, are we talking about hosting cost?
The support costs.
Oh, the support costs? Yeah, they're similar to our current support costs. And we talked to multiple other municipalities that have already, that are partly through or entirely through their implementation to for for Endeavor. And the alternative to Endeavor was, I think, KPMG, which they're a big firm, it's quite a bit more expensive. There's not a lot that are that do exactly what Endeavor does in terms of, there's quite a few firms that we can hire to implement, but not necessarily support is where there isn't as many. And so we did look at like possibly KPMG, but it was just going to be way more expensive. And we've talked to multiple people that use Endeavor that were very happy with Endeavor. And so for support, we don't have to like, we can use them as long as we want, right? Like, if if once it's implemented and we they support us for a year and we don't think that they're providing the service we want, we're not committed for life to Endeavor specifically, if that makes sense.
Right, right. I guess the the next question I have would be two fifty one for the implementation of the first year, but what would be the ongoing cost after that?
It's actually, I'm trying to think off the top of my head, and when I say it's just over fifty thousand and Serenic's currently almost sixty thousand. So we're actually, we're actually pretty much continuing on the same course as as we're on right now, which I was very pleasantly surprised by. I can't speak to how long it'll be that, you know, with costs increasing, but the first year is just over fifty. I want to say it's between fifty one and fifty two thousand.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Is there a member of council like to make a motion? Council Evans?
Can't just use an Excel spreadsheet, eh?
Or a ledger book?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm sliding them across. Okay, I'll make the motion that council directs administration to sign the MOU with Endeavor Solutions to upgrade our financial software as per AIR dash twenty four dash two thirty three.
Thank you very much for that. Any comment question debate on the motion? All the motion that has been made, all in favor? That is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Moving along the agenda to our last decision item, which is our addition nine point six Facility Code of Conduct. I believe that Mr. Rossing had handed this out to everybody. Does everybody have a copy of it? Yep. No, I don't think so. You got it?
Hello again. So on August twenty fourth twenty sixteen, the Town Facilities Rules of Conduct Policy was enacted and has served the organization for the last eight years. Due to new concerns being expressed within town facilities, in particular around the civic center, administration conducted a basic review of the policy to determine its effectiveness and recommended changes to ensure that policy is as effective as possible. And it allows staff to deal with concerns in more timely and appropriate fashion. So at a high level, proposed changes to the previous policy include prohibitions on vaping. It previously only prohibited smoking. This is already a prohibited through provincial legislation. Clarified wording throughout included loitering where prohibited, including failed to comply with a directive signed placed at a town facility. An example is this is if we're we're starting to see new challenges within a facility. If it's not already encompassed within the policy, we have the ability to put up a sign, you can or can't do this. Good example, say, we have a bunch of people starting to go down to the hockey games, using those air horns, causing a bunch of issues. Currently, right now, we don't have anything that explicitly says you can or can't do that in a policy. So if that is something that becomes a concern, we can put up proper signage and now we can start regulating that type of thing. So that's that's kind of where that directive sign comes from. Clarifies that only registered service dogs are welcome in town facilities. Currently, it allows for service animals are welcomed, but this just ensures that wording is consistent with provincial legislation. It increases the facility's manager's authorities to suspend or expel someone from a facility from three days to seven days. It adds in the ability for general managers of a facility to suspend or expel someone from seven days to six months. Currently, the general managers play no role in the policy. It adds in the ability for enforcement services staff, so that's bylaw officers and peace officers, to suspend or expel someone for up to six months. It amends the CAO involvement to suspend or expel any expel from anything more than three days to anything longer than six months. So it's starting to put those different layers in, so the CAO is not involved in everything. It clarifies an appeal mechanism for suspensions for more than twenty four hours. And it clarifies that if someone is contravening their suspension or expulsion, then they are considered trespassing and law enforcement shall be made aware for for further action. So if these changes are accepted, it does reduce the risk within facilities that are new, since the policy has been implemented, and it allows for staff a more streamlined approach. Organizational implications, it empowers staff to deal with concerns within town facilities and service level. It does streamline the process and reduce the involvement of the CAO matters that general managers or enforcement services staff can deal with. So the recommendation from administration is that council approve the updated Facilities Rules of Conduct Policy, A O four one six, as presented with the amendments. Any questions?
Thank you very much for that. Council might just need a minute to go through it. Is there any questions? Go ahead, Council Sheriffs?
Besides it being kind of obvious what the difference between registered service dog and currently it's just a service animals are welcome. What would a person need? Need to have to prove that it is a registered? Like, what is the what is the difference right now? Do we hear that, oh, it's a service dog? No, I don't have any papers?
Correct.
Okay, then they would actually have to have it.
Under the provincial legislation for provincial or the Service Dog Act, I believe it's called, there's an actual process to go through to get get an accredited dog. At that point, you get different papers. The dog's got to be in a proper vest kind of thing, right? So it's a working dog at that point. It's not just me showing up with my cat today and saying, this is my service animal, and you got to let me in the facility kind of thing, right? So it just streamlines. If if staff members aren't aware of what what that provincial legislation is, this just kind of helps out a little bit, I'm hoping anyways, on clarifying on, no, you can't just bring your animal into the building because you want to. If you want an animal in this building, it does need to be a registered service dog.
And that's my question, because currently it just allows service animals and those don't need any registration papers, proof that it's a service, it can be just any animal, any pet they can bring in right now? Chicken, goat?
Could be.
Could be, really? Oh, okay, that's that's interesting, actually.
Just trying to clarify that kind of stuff so that it's, again, in line with with the rules through the provincial legislation and, again, prohibiting the people just bringing in their animal because they want to kind of thing.
Exactly. No, thank you.
I guess with that question, what if there was a registered service cat or chicken? Wouldn't we want to just leave it as animals?
No such thing under provincial legislation. They can only be a dog.
Can only be a dog.
From from a formal legislative standpoint, you often hear people have their their support.
Yeah, cats or.
But that is not a recognized animal for support services under provincial legislation.
Very interesting. Yeah, right? Council Commander?
I'm sorry, one of the points in that amended CEO involvement to suspend, expel from three days to maybe longer than six months. Just trying to understand how much of occurrence do we see, something like that? Is it because that there's too much going on that you're trying to change it the time period a bit?
A good example, this came up again yesterday, where we have an individual not meeting the criteria for enforcement per se, but they're not really following the the expected rules of the facility, right? So currently, how it states is any town staff, so that does include enforcement services, we're only allowed to expel someone from the facility for the remainder of that day. So the process, how it currently is, is now we have to do some backend paperwork. We got to submit it to the CAO. The CAO needs to review it, make a determination if it's going to be anything more than essentially that twenty four hours. More than three days, I guess, because the facility manager could come in there. So trying to streamline some of the process, do we need CAO's involvement in all this kind of stuff? Guess that's for you guys to determine. My suggestion would be, no, probably not. They could probably focus on a little bit more things and it empowers law enforcement to do the stuff that we're we're supposed to be doing kind of thing. Good example of of yesterday, now we're going through all this administrative backend stuff to try and catch up. In the meantime, this individual can come back to the facility today because all the paperwork hasn't been figured out on what are we doing? If this was a local business that called us with the exact same concern, the question would be, do you want to ban this person? Yep, they'd sign a paper and that person's banned right then and there. It's two minute process. We're done kind of thing, right? So because of the current policy that's in place, it does hand tie us on exactly what we can and can't do and it delays process. So in the meantime, that person comes back, we're waiting for a CAO to review, to sign, all that kind of stuff. So it's it's not a not a policy that's used frequently per se, but it is a policy that I think, especially with concerns that we're seeing more frequently. We're going to be using it a lot more and there is going to be that possibility for more involvement of the CAOs to have to get involved on stuff they don't really need to be involved in. Thank you.
Council Clerk?
Just to be a little field lawyerish here, so it's town facility. So the town owns, for instance, the building that the food bank's in. So are we going to differentiate between town owned and operated or as if, I guess, pick on Hans, Hans has a dispute with Lyndon Muth at the food bank and says, Lyndon, you're no you're no longer allowed in this building, right? They they operate it, we own. So should we differentiate there or because, I mean, typically you would go with the the tenants direction there, right?
Yeah.
Now, to answer that question, or at least try to answer that and see where the discussion goes, but thank you. So basically, yes, the operator, of course, is the one that operates the building. So previously, those banning issues have been always part of the operator. When the operating agreement is set, that's basically part of it. Not specifically how the banning or those kind of rules of conduct are displayed, but if there's, let's say, anything specific, it could be done during the operating agreement. But regularly, the operators are setting those guidelines and rules.
So I guess do we, does that still give us the ability as the owner to ban somebody from a non-operated facility? This is my question.
Through both provincial legislation and technically how this this policy is currently worded, correct, we would be able to ban from our own facilities as well, whether it's operator or not. If councils desire us of having some kind of wording surrounding not including any facilities that are being operated, I can get some wording together quickly on that.
Yeah, I guess it's just a thought in my head, though. I mean, we, I'm assuming the food bank, for instance, wouldn't want us going in there and saying, you're banned for our own reasons, not their reasons, right? So just a thought. I don't know what the rest of council thinks, or if it's just a moot point or what, but.
Council McGee?
Well, I think it is an interesting discussion. As Hans mentioned, where it goes, but Warming Hearts, the library itself, they have a, you know, they're renting from us so they can make their own decisions, if I if I'm reading this correctly, although I would suggest that they would probably say we need your support in order to go to the next level. And that ties into Council Clerk's sort of question. Do we have, do we need to be more clear or do we do we just expect that that this is how it will happen? I'm thinking directly of Warming Hearts. They make their own decisions. We don't rent that facility, but we we do through the grant systems pay for it. So, yeah, do you see anything there that we need to be considering, Cody?
My my initial thought would be something along the lines of it doesn't include facilities that are being operated elsewhere, but I also don't want to hand hand tie us again in another situation. So maybe wording along the lines of if it's not or if it is operated by someone else, then decisions will be made with the operator of that facility or something along those lines. So it's, again, it might end up, one person says yes, one person says no, but it does allow some encourages that that communication with the operators of that facility as well, right?
So perhaps. So perhaps it say that if it's not in the operator's agreement, then this. Town facility rules of conduct policy super. What is the word? Supersedes the agreement. Would that work?
I think a little bit of the issue that we might have is until an agreement.
You don't have agreements with every. Facility operator?
I'm, I'm just assuming if there's not current wording that would be sufficient at this time, then we'd have a period of time where. Whose, whose policies are we following under at that point, right? So and I don't know how challenging it is to get however many operator agreements amended.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I think when we want to consider this amendment of the policy for our rules and conduct in our operated buildings. Owned and operated buildings, and this is a first step to sort out how that correlates with operated buildings by other entities. That we still own, but they operate. I would suggest to keep that as it is right now out of this first change and then work in the coming time how that could be done. Because it would be a discussion as well with those operators, how it would support them in their operations, how we change it now for our rules and conduct. And see how that maybe plays out in the future to change those agreements. So I would suggest if council is willing to consider this change first for our operated and own buildings. And give us the time to sort it out with our operators.
Perfect. Thank you for that. Council Evans, do you have a question?
Yes, thank you.
If you want to just raise your hand so that I know if you have a question, that'd be wonderful. Thanks.
I'll keep that in mind. To me, we're over complicating this. A complaint or a request for a ban from. A building that's run by someone else would be generated by them. I don't think Cody's going to be running around popping into these various. To the food bank or whatever, saying, oh, can I, can I implement this? In this particular. Building that's being run by a separate entity. However, if say the food bank is having an issue with someone. Then I think at that point in time, they can, or they can, or they would reach out to. Our C P Os and say, hey, what can we do? And at that point in time, maybe Cody can then say, well, we have a policy that we can enforce if you. Want to file that. Complaint or ask for that suspension. Is that not kind of how it would be implemented in those particular, in our own facilities? Of course, our managers would have an issue with, with a problem person and we would, we would follow this directly. But to me, independent operator would simply run into the situation that they have and inquire. As to what options are, are there, no?
I, I think. We get a complaint from food bank, for example, we would be going there and we would be acting. Because through, through the trespassing legislation, they would be the agent to the property. So at that point, at their direction, whether they want someone trespassed, whatever, is. I wouldn't even be looking on the backend on, well, is this town facility or not, right? I'd be operating under the understanding that you are the tenant. You can make this decision that you don't want this individual here. So playing this through, I don't even think. Driving up to the food bank today, oh, we got a, a facility conduct policy that we need to follow for a building like that, right? When I, when I think of this policy, it's a lot more your civic center, your omniplex, your C T C, that kind of stuff, right? So I think to your point on our view of complicating, I think we might. Again, as, as I'm thinking through, we get a call from one of these individuals, right? We're not acting under the town policy at that point. We're acting under the provincial legislation. And what does the operator, who's the agent under the legislation, what do they want done? I want this person banned for your, perfect, sign here, done, off we go, right? So.
Uh, Councilor Kamala, oh, did you want to make a, a motion or another question?
I'd like to make a comment if I may. I'll. I'll say this, Cody. I think that. In the end, if we can. I've made a push for this, obviously. Got a response via email a couple of weeks ago that was quite interesting. I'm glad to see that we're addressing this and putting the structure in place to. Give you the tools. To do something about it. And, and I think that in the end, our residents are going to appreciate. Our efforts to make the use of our facilities more enjoyable and, and safe ultimately. So yes, I think this is good and I appreciate that you will have what you need to. Feel secure moving, moving forward and addressing this issue. Thank you.
Uh, Councilor Kamala, do you have a question or a motion?
No, I was just gonna, I guess, add my two cents to, to the conversation here. Yeah, I, I think, you know, from your side, it's more of a. Information driven or complaint driven, right? So if the manager from a facility or. Somebody from one of these. Buildings that's been rented out. Approaches you or give you the information, then you would work on that. I don't think he will be there waiting for something to happen and, you know, take action. As such, right? So when, when I think through it as you do as well. So I think, you know, what's, what's been here is okay. Just because that either the manager of a town facility or the C A O. Or the person or the organization that's renting that location will be in contact with you. Asking for the help or requesting for, for support, right? And that's when you will start working towards whatever the required by, by them. That the support they've asked for. So in that sense, I think what you've written here should work. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Is there a member of council like to make a motion to accept his information? I guess. Just to make a motion, Councilor McGee?
I do have a motion, Madam Mayor. I make a motion the council approves the updated facility rules of conduct policy A O four sixteen as presented. With amendments in A I R twenty four two thirty six.
Thank you very much for that. Any comment, question, debate on the motion? Just a little spelling error. There, you see that? Okay, so there's a motion to approve the updated facility rules of conduct policy. I'll call the motion. All in favor. That is carried. Thank you very much. That is it for our decision items this morning. Do we have any questions in regards to the project status report for October? If there is no questions, then I will move into department reports. First up is Municipal Service Department Report, Ms. Shelley Terry.
Good morning, Madam Mayor and members of council. We'll start with utilities. So our combo unit has been out cleaning sewer lines every day. I think we're almost halfway through town with our sewer lines, which is a huge accomplishment for our team. They also conducted some additional training for winter operations. So that the crew knows exactly how that machine runs through the winter and we don't have any, any breakdowns, unnecessary breakdowns. So that was very beneficial. Our seasonal staff at the water plant has now finished. His last day was on September nineteenth. The utilities team is, is continuing winterizing hydrants and dead end hydrant flushing. Staff have been attending some seminars at the water plant and a school tour went through on Thursday for, last Thursday. For the grade six, sirs and H W pickup. Parks, we've been taking down our hanging baskets. We just don't have the resources to keep them living in the colder nights have kind of damaged them. Our team has finished up wetting season at the C E T C. This season went very well. We had no complaints this year. So far we have caught up on the mowing and the grass seems to not be growing as much. So we're hoping that was our last mowing rotation. Crews are starting to work with mechanics to do season changeover for all of our equipment. We are starting to get ready to, to switch to picking up leaves in our parks areas. And we have the path construction at D B Park and Peace Park ongoing. We do want to get in there and do some weed whacking and stuff, but once construction is completed. Public Works, they're preparing equipment for the season changeover as well. Will be road sweeping to get rid of the leaves here shortly. A snow removal tender is open. It closes on October fifteenth. Memorial bench was installed at Sunrise Pond for late councillor Bill Ballas. Olympia ice resurfacer will have emission testing done shortly. Additional gravel was hauled into the landfill with in-house equipment. This will improve our hauling operations within that, in the landfill. Hazard tree work is ongoing with our contract at Arborist. We've identified problematic trees for snow removal operations. And we'll be working with Arborist for the town owned properties and enforcement for the non-town owned properties to, to begin this maintenance. Beginning to cross train our operators at their respective operator levels on various equipment with the goal to improve crew flexibility. As well as the sessions in, if they occur. Some significant efforts were made in painting curbs in arterial roads. Speed bumps in key areas as well as school zones before snowfalls. Landscaping at Memorial Park has made progress. Public Works will lay sod when it's available. Contractor. Is repairing a significant hole surrounding a catch basin near Ivonto. So one of the rings had shifted and, and it actually washed out some of the pavement around, around the catch basin. So we've repaired that now. We've also started hauling sand and chips with in-house equipment for winter sanding operation, mixing calcium in partnership with Brazu County. Landfill and engineering, regular landfill operation is ongoing, regular monitoring of each age, measuring levels according to A E P approval compliance. And every week we get them pumped out. Smooth operations for town garbage pickup. We need to bring the mulch up to the top of the, the cell, I think it's cell D. To use for, for daily cover. Need to fix road behind existing cell three C. W S P performed topographical survey last week, September seventeenth, twenty twenty four for snow storage design facilities. Bi-weekly progress meetings with W S P are every Thursday now. Trail upgrades at Peace Park started, concrete removal, asphalt removal started on September twenty third. The B Park Trail is done for sub base, proof rolling and waiting for contractor for asphalt. We issued an R F Q for environmental monitoring and reporting. Sorry, it's been issued now. And we started concrete informing curbs and gutters at forty sixth street all the way to forty third street for the fifty F construction. Fifty F, that's the readers have, have, they should have completed that or are close to completing that today. And I'll open it up for questions.
Thank you very much for your report. Any questions for Ms. Terry? Councilor Evans?
The, the mulch that we, so that's what we ended up with after all the wood we, we received and we brought in that mulcher and mulched it up.
Correct.
Do you find it? And, and maybe in the end we'll kick this around sustainability committee, but. You know, it would be good to decide whether it was worth it to start kicking that wood aside. Not putting it in the landfill, mulching it and. You know, I thought maybe we could use it around town for landscaping or something, but you know, that has its own challenges, I understand. But what do you, what do you think? Is it worthwhile having that there? I, I mean, it's keeping it out of our landfill.
It, it is, yeah. So I, I do think that we will be using it for some of our landscaping. It's just some isn't the greatest condition. So we've got to kind of be careful on what we're pulling out of there to, to use for that purpose.
Right. And it does give us another option, I guess, for, for daily cover, although we've got quite a bit of fill right now available, which wasn't always the case either.
That's right. That's right. Yeah, it does work well for daily cover. It also works well for the road going up. So it does help kind of maintain the mud from that road. So there, there's multiple purposes we can use for it. Right now it's just a little too early to know whether or not it's worth it because. They just kept piling it. So we didn't mulch until this year. So until we actually see what we're kind of getting yearly. And what we're mulching and what that cost looks like, it's kind of hard to determine because we had multiple years worth that we mulched this year.
Right.
But overall, it wasn't too terribly expensive. I think the most we spent was about six thousand to, to mulch. So it's not, it wasn't too terrible and we've actually found some better pricing now. So. Might even be better. So I'll bring a report to council probably next year, closer to the end of year to kind of discuss whether or not it's working or not.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Councilor McGee?
Sure is. I don't want to tell you what our E T A is looking like because I don't want to jinx us. Actually, I might have put it in the project status report, so just ignore that. But yeah, we are looking to make schedules.
And when the combo unit has been out cleaning sewer lines every day, what, that. That's helpful because. We need to flush those lines and we, sometimes we get years behind and.
Yeah, we, we're about three years behind on sewer flushing throughout town. Realistically, we only had. A, a truck able to hit emergency ones. It wasn't really cleaning. With this truck, we have the ability to actually suck the waste out. So all those solids, we're not just pushing further down the stream to make it a problem further down. We're actually removing it. And this truck just, it's got just a lot more capabilities to, to keep them clean. We've actually, we did a demo on a nozzle and it's pretty impressive. So we're looking at, at that. We've had a couple incidences where we've blown back into people's houses. So we're looking at our options on whether or not we can, we can find a nozzle that will prevent that and, and we believe we've found that nozzle. So we're hoping. And it looks like it's going to do root cutting. It kind of serves multiple purposes. So it'll be ideal to, to get that thing.
Great, thank you.
That is fantastic. Just a question in regards to, where did it say? Snow removal tender is open. It closes October fifteenth. How many snow hauling trucks do we own, the town of Drayton Valley? And how many do we typically hire and contract out?
We own two.
We own two?
Yes. And then the other bigger trucks have the sander units in them. So. Actually, we might actually only own three total and then two have sanders. So one of ours is hauling and that's it.
So one is hauling. And how many contracts do we typically?
So we, we don't do an R F P for haulers. What we do is we send out an application to all of them and say, if you're interested, and then we put them on a rotation. So it's fair for everyone and we give as much business to all local companies as possible. And I think we run about twenty to thirty. When we're actually performing that snow removal.
Twenty to thirty. And are there rates comparable to our truck in-house?
All rates are set off of the road builder rates. So we base our rates for our truck the same way as they get paid for theirs. So it's about a hundred and thirty an hour based off the road builder rate.
Okay, perfect. Okay. Well, thank you very much for your report. Next up is eleven point two Protective Services Department Report, Mr. Tom Thompson this morning. It's hard to believe it's still morning and we're already here.
Good morning.
Good morning, and I'm Reeve, or Madam Mayor. I was, I said Reeve. I was at that county council yesterday, so my apologies. And I'm mayor and council.
That's okay.
So I'm here this morning to do an update report. For Protective Services. First bid is the fire operations from May to August. We responded to a hundred and seventy three calls for service, thirty four of which were fire calls. Twenty five motor vehicle collisions, two rescues, seventy alarm calls. Assisting other agencies were twenty seven and then miscellaneous calls were fifteen. Um, assisting other agencies were twenty-seven, and then miscellaneous calls were fifteen. So that brings us up to a total of three hundred and forty-eight calls for service as of the end of August. Moving into some other items, um, so as council is aware, in the twenty twenty-four budget deliberations, council approved a new command truck at station three. Uh, and this is a cost-shared vehicle with Brazo County, so I'm happy to announce that it is now in place and is now operational, so uh, life is, life is good. Another issue that we've been having uh is with our aerial truck. Our ladder truck has been uh down at Rocky Mountain Phoenix for repairs. Uh, we had a uh uh s- a hydraulic failure with the rear stabilizers uh for the ladder. Uh, as well as while it was down there, we suffered a cooling system failure, which uh destroyed the uh the fan as well as the radiator and the uh culling for the the fan. Uh, so we are looking at repairs of approximately twenty thousand dollars for the the aerial truck. Um, so the truck is uh showing wear and tear. Two years ago, we had another major uh failure with that truck and it costs us about ten thousand. And in twenty twenty-five, we're going to be spending some more significant dollars to replace all the tires on that vehicle, so it is costing us some significant dollars, so it's time to to move that that piece of equipment along. Uh, in regards to personal uh personnel updates, um last week uh we were, we moved forward with hiring a new deputy chief of operations. Uh, the interviews went very well, so we are in the final stages and we're hoping that we can get that position filled uh quickly. Um, I'm happy that uh we had some really good quality candidates, so hopefully that that position will be filled shortly. On another note, uh our other deputy chief Lasik will be off work for an extended period of time. Uh, and he was, it was unfortunate that he sustained an injury to his spine, which required surgery. Uh, so he is going to be out for an indefinite period of time. Um, we're hoping for a speedy recovery for him, but uh he will be off work for a significant amount of time, so I am now currently uh doing three positions with just me, so it's been a lot of long hours and late nights and and doing a lot of different things, so I'm not, I was available to a lot of the meetings that uh that I'm normally able to attend, so. Uh, as a result of that, we have uh in in discussions with uh HR and with finance, we uh one of our paid-on-call staff is uh kind of jumped in to do some of the uh uh floor stuff for us, uh doing some maintenance as well as uh doing a lot of responding to the calls to to help bridge the gap until we can get some of these positions filled. Uh, moving on to enforcement services, um at council's direction, there was several items that council uh had requested us to move forward with, uh the speed bumps at the, on the campground road. Uh, we have rectified that situation, uh Shelley and her team have moved some large rocks on the sides of the roads where the speed bumps are, so now it's not going to be possible for people to drive around the speed bumps on that, on that road. Uh, as well as the dump truck that was parked at the campground area, uh our enforcement services uh made contact with that individual um who indicated that uh his uh work here was completed, so he was moving off to White Court, so the truck is no longer going to be in that area. Uh, we did find out, however, that um in our uh in our investigation of that incident, that uh the road was being chewed up as a result of the dump truck being parked there, but it's also a result of uh campers and fifth wheels uh turning around in that area, so it's chewing up the road as well, so uh Shelley has indicated with her team that uh we'll be addressing that in the twenty twenty-five budget as we move forward, so. Uh, in regards to CPO vehicles, uh we've had an issue with our CPO car. Um, we've had a significant number of electrical failures with it, uh the wipers uh just randomly turn on and off um without uh without us activating it, uh which causes us some problems, and the more serious one, it uh the vehicle will shut off. Um, and we had an incident where we were, uh where our CPO officers were dealing with um some individuals who were uh were uncooperative and threatening. And then when they uh went to move the vehicle, the vehicle died, which uh put them in a safety situation, so consequently, uh we are, uh, we've uh taken the vehicle to a another uh another shop and uh they have consequently gutted the whole vehicle and gone through all of the wiring system, and we think we have found the problem, we hope. Um, so far, so good, but it's uh, it has cost us some some dollars to do that, but I think we've now managed to get that problem sorted out, so it's just taking a little bit of time to do that. Uh, in regards to the unhoused uh squatting trespassing issues, um as council is aware, uh we moved some individuals off of the land that was uh by the seasons apartment. Uh, they caused, they um very quickly relocated to another property. Uh, the owner of that property asked that uh we intervene and move them off of that property, which we did. Uh, and then they've moved on to another piece of property, so currently, right now, we're chasing them uh kind of all over the place. Uh, they are uh, um, there's just a couple of individuals, but it is, it is problematic, because we're now moving them from one place to the next, to the next. Uh, we're hoping that they uh relocate out towards the the dump area, but uh until that happens, we're going to continue moving them, moving them along from one place to the next. And as a final wrap-up, uh as councils is aware, um October is fire prevention month, so we are uh initiating our our fire prevention campaign. Uh, in in uh this, tonight, we will be uh out at uh lodge pool at station one, doing an open house out there. Uh, and then that will be followed by next Wednesday now, next Wednesday night out in Breton, doing an open house, and then October sixteenth, uh we will be in Drayton Valley doing the open house here at uh at station three. As well, we will be attending the uh Thunder Hockey Game uh this Saturday, October fifth, where we do a a big fire prevention campaign. Uh, we're going to be doing a T-shirt toss program as well as uh handing handing out swag and educating the public on fire prevention, so it's it's usually a a fun night for for everybody, is uh my staff as well as the public, so we will uh hope to us to see uh everybody there. Uh, as well, we are also uh continuing on with the uh successful chimney sweep program, which is starting next week. And we will be doing the pizza delivery program on October twenty-third, which is another popular event that we do every year. That's my report.
So thank you very much. You've had a, uh, you'll have a busy October ahead of you.
We will.
Any questions for Mr. Thompson this morning? Councillor McGee?
Not to jinx it, but ribbon cutting for the Memorial Park?
It's coming, we're, we've uh, we've made a lot of progress, uh as I I I ran into councillor McGee the other day when we were standing looking at the park, uh the uh sod is going to be going in shortly, we are getting the uh the wiring and electrical hooked up for the lighting that's going to be there. Uh, I'm also negotiating with a a museum uh on a, an old truck that we are going to be uh placing, placing out there, and our our flagpole has been ordered and it's going to be put up, so a lot of these things are going to be happening in the next couple of weeks, I can't give you an exact date on when the ribbon cutting is going to happen, but we're pushing hard to get all that stuff in place for, before winter hits, so.
Yeah, it'd be great.
Yeah.
It looks, it looks really good.
It's exciting, we're moving.
And sad to hear about uh Camille, uh it it's work injury?
Uh, no, um, it's a an odd thing, uh he came into work with a sore back and uh I, it was a little bit scary, because it, when he came in, he was dragging his arm and his leg and I and we were like, are you having a stroke? So uh he, we promptly sent him off to the the hospital. Uh, and then he was whisked to the U of A hospital for surgery for a a ruptured disc and C five ruptured disc, and it's now left him paralyzed. Um, so we are, we are hoping that things work out, he's starting to get feeling in his lower body and everything again, and he's starting to walk again, but he's now gonna have to go to rehab to uh learn how to program his brain how to walk again, so it's going to be a long, long process, so we wish him all the best and it'll just be a matter of time.
And lastly, the um deputy chief of operations, uh is, do you had lots of applications, are you thinking in-house?
Uh, we've had some people that have applied in-house as well as people external. Um, and we've had candidates who are very good from both, so we'll just pick the best person for the job and we'll move forward from there.
Thanks, Tom.
Uh, councillor Manor?
Thank you, and it's uh hopeful to hear about Camille wishing speedy recovery there. Um, I just wanted to, I guess, appreciate you, your team's work uh at the incident that happened on the central uh part there, um, it's amazing that it's unfortunate that we lost one unit, but it's amazing how you saved the rest there, so thank you very much for that.
Yeah, uh, I commend the uh the team on their hard work. Um, as council is aware, the uh the trailers there are are very close uh to each other. And uh the ability of the team to uh manage to save the the surrounding structures there was was incredible, and I uh I really commend their hard work. It was a a full team effort there, we were, we were there till, I think, four o'clock in the morning. Um, so it was a a long, a long night, but uh um, we had a successful resolution, although we didn't save the original property that was involved, we did save the the residences around it, so.
Fantastic, well, thank you very much for your report, and thank you for all the hard work that you do and the month ahead of events and spreading that awareness. I, it's very important, so thank you for doing that, and yes, hopefully, uh Camille will have a speedy recovery and be back to uh moving around and and dancing again soon.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, and Ms. Thompson, can you please add uh October sixteenth, Drayton Valley Open House, Station Three to um all of our uh calendars, please, thank you. Uh, so next up in the agenda uh for department reports, we have eleven point three, which is Community and Recreation Services Department Report, Mr. Hans von Flauwer, you are up.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, and uh to the rest of council, but also to the rest of the community, basically, because first of all, I like to say that I'm looking forward to work with Alvera in Unisys, and of course, the rest of our municipal staff, uh management team, to serve the community in this transition time, so um, I do really appreciate the uh time and the working time and experiences we had with uh Mr. Uh Wally Ferris in the time that uh he was with us, and for our staff, he was an important person to learn from and uh work in that period together, so I wish him all the best in uh his retirement. Um, I'm happy to support council, uh that's an important thing, of course, and in this uh upcoming time, work together and uh make sure that we do the right thing for our community and uh make steps forward, so thank you for that opportunity.
Thank you.
So the report for the Community and Recreation Services Department, just a couple of highlights, uh first, starting with the ECDC. Um, it says over there that uh we were on outbreak status, that was just for a couple of days at that moment the report was written. At the moment, we are not on outbreak status, uh on any, let's say, transmissible uh injuries or, let's say, diseases that we have uh sometimes over there, so we're not on an outbreak status. Friends, uh Friends Giving, I have to say that correctly, is a an awesome initiative. Uh, not only the kids are looking forward to those opportunities to thank our sponsors, but especially those uh uh that we are going to visit, uh Weyerhauser and Familien are already looking forward to get the kids in their facilities and show them around and appreciate uh the youngsters in our community. FCSS, the board, the Drayton Valley and District FCSS Board is accepting applications. It's a process, of course, for every year, so this is for uh projects occurring in twenty twenty-five. Uh, connect with Jen Finn or our FCSS location for information. And follow up, and sometimes we see those events, of course, happening and they have a spin-off, uh and I said sometimes, but you're always looking for what's the value, so the poverty uh simulation event in the past winter, one of the spin-offs that we have from that is starting sessions, uh hosting those to educate and help people uh bring uh, let's say, certain items forward. Um, so the first session will be Wednesday, October ninth, is uh nine AM via Zoom, and it will focus on food insecurity. For the Omniplex, uh basically total uh fitness in our uh, of course, MCC. In our MCC, in our uh curling ring, uh where we did that, uh hosting of the uh National Day of Truth and Reconciliation. Uh, this was the event, of course, last Monday, the thirtieth. About under two hundred and fifty attendees were at the event uh coming out, um it was very special. Uh, especially because, of course, we organized it together with the Metis and the First Nations organizations. So it was very good to bring those together and um bring a a lot of uh items forward in the sense of speakers and uh entertainment. So it was very good, and even they uh understood how important it was to have those uh come together, so uh Chief Willie Littlechild, and not everybody knows that, but at the last moment, we were able to secure that. Uh, he's the uh chief that does the announcement for the Oilers on the big screen for every event, uh every uh Oilers game. He was there to speak uh to uh the attendees. Um, but also we had the Fiddlers, uh Alex, uh who came out, a very high uh quality of uh entertainment. That also uh was, for instance, in Italy, when he uh visited Pope with his group and was able to perform uh uh at that event a couple of years ago, so it was great to see that uh, let's say, high level of uh um people and representatives of our uh indigenous community come together and uh basically honor and uh stand still with the uh Truth and Reconciliation Day, and the word reconciliation was voiced a couple of times. Um, it's also exciting to see that uh a less known facility in our Omniplex is the boxing ring that we have downstairs, so that location is being used by Checkmate Martial Arts, so starting that up uh recently, so check that out, but it's great to see our facility, of course, used in in various ways. For the uh Aquatic Center, the pool, um over there, of course, the events that are happening on a regular basis, so check those out on Facebook. One of the things is upcoming October twenty-fifth is our Halloween Splash Dance. For Community Services, um Vanessa, our outreach uh worker, our community outreach worker uh has done some extra training, visiting uh a conference where there's a lot of interaction and uh ideas, but uh connection make um to bring back here to our community and help us out uh in uh supporting uh our vulnerable population, so we'll see her out there in our community way more and giving all the opportunities that comes with her specialty and her knowledge and skills. For the facilities, um, there's a lot happening, of course, always uh one item. I asked about uh what's the sound, so we're going to hear about it, uh hopefully also feedback from our users and uh the public. The speakers are up in the Omniplex, we are still struggling with the uh basically the timing, uh a couple of items on the uh new scoring clock with our uh workers, not only ours, but also, of course, uh uh the install um uh companies. We are working to get that better done, but our speakers are up, so I'm happy to see uh what the result is uh for our improved sound system over there. And with that, maybe there's any questions?
Thank you very much for your report. Any questions? Councillor Evan?
Um, yeah, just a observation, maybe, uh for the the reconciliation uh evening. I I thought it was a uh great success. Um, you know, Hans, you pointed out the uh, the music was very good, they were really sharp, uh excellent, we had some pretty special guests there. Um, I just found that it, of course, it it ran quite late. Um, and being a family kind of um um event, uh yeah, I guess, you know, maybe we want to keep that in mind uh for next year's scheduling, and uh I ended up getting so cold sitting there by you know, I stuck around till shortly after nine, but I I finally had to uh uh had to head home and uh and 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 heat up, so I don't know if we can you know, maybe adjust the the location of the of the food truck, I think that was the, you know, uh the reason why the the big door was open, so people had access to there. Uh, yeah, just a couple suggestions, but uh otherwise, it was uh, it was a real success and uh everybody um who had a hand in that should be uh very proud of how it turned out. Thank you.
Yes, it sounds like it was a wonderful event. Thank you, everyone, for organizing, and thank you, uh Deputy Rick, for uh stepping in and uh doing the speech and the offering, appreciate it. And thank you, Deputy Rick, for stepping in and doing the speech and the offering. Appreciate it. Councilman McGee?
Physiotherapist will be joining Total Works Fitness. And so I know I'm probably going to get a call from somebody saying, you know, you're competing against the physiotherapist people I hope that are rent or, you know, are competitive. Because that's, that'll be the argument that I'll hear. So I just wanted to be sure that that's the case or it's a business that's operating and will pay rent.
And thank you for that question, Councilor McGee and through the chair. So yes, it's a rental agreement that we made with this physiotherapist. So they rent a small space in our facility. They will get their referrals, of course, through the, let's say, the medical field. And it's a small business that operates, let's say, independently. So yes, they are paying renter, user of our facility.
And lastly, the Checkmate Martial Arts. I happen to run into Carl Wees. And Carl is the fellow that's running the Checkmate Martial Arts. And he is the grandson of Lawrence Stuparin, which is really cool. So it's just a revolving door. It's wonderful. So it was good to see him there. Thanks.
Any other questions, Councilor Clark?
Yeah, just with respect to the physiotherapy, I mean, I think most rec facilities have those in them anyway. So I don't think it's abnormal that municipality would have a physiotherapist in there. One question, Hans. We got an email the other day regarding garbage at the Omniplex parking lot area. That seems to be an ongoing issue and I don't know what the solution is. But, you know, do we need to go sit down with HTA's admin there and chat? Because I spend a lot of time down there and I see who's doing that sort of stuff. And HTA, I think, is probably the right place to go. So, you know, we should, is that something we should be looking at or can look at?
Thank you, Councilor Clark and through the chair. So, yeah, we see, of course, that as a recurring issue at the location. It's windy over there. There's evening usage by individuals. Public comes by. We have seen even initiatives from the public. There was a group of men that went out on a Sunday morning to support and then just pick garbage. So that's great to see those initiatives, of course. But you're right, we have to take a look into what is the cause and can we do that. Our municipal staff from the Omniplex, they go out on a daily basis as well. Especially you can see the improvement on close to the building because that's what they see first when they even come to work. It's the rest of the parking lot is a continuous, let's say, attention point. So, yeah, we can reach out to HTA and see what, they can be part of the solution or at least part of what causes it and be a talking partner and maybe find solutions together.
And even Frank Maddock, because I think that both the high school kids come there and that's kind of the hangout for everybody between 16 and 20. I don't know what the solution is. Maybe once we put up those verbs or whatever there that maybe there won't be as much attention there because then there's going to be limited to how they can line up and park. I don't know. It's a theory, maybe.
And I will add, though, I mean, I was out for a walk the other night and I saw an individual drinking something out of a can. They just threw it on the side of the path and I don't want to pigeonhole. It's just, you know, teenagers doing it. It's everybody. It's unfortunate lack of respect for the town overall, right?
Yeah. Well, thank you very much for your report. We'll move into council reports. First up is Councilman Manna.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On 26th and 27th, I had the opportunity to go with the rest of the council to the Alberta Munis Conference in Red Deer. And in Red Deer, as we know, you know, it's a little bit apart facilities and going around. Other than that, I think it was a successful conference and had the opportunity to meet with K Division as well the next day. On the 28th, ALS fundraiser, once again, was very well organized and very well attended. And it's great to see how many businesses in the community supports that cause there. On the 30th, Truth and Reconciliation, I had the opportunity to go to that event as well. As Deputy Mayor Rick mentioned, it was a very successful event, very well organized. And having Chief Littlechild there, I guess, kind of the icing of the cake. And I was great to see him there as well, the message that he was bringing to the community. So kudos to the team that organized that. And every year, we see that, you know, it's improving. So thank you very much for that. On the 1st, I had the opportunity to go with Madam Mayor to Future Skills Session in Edmonton. Mayor, our mayor did a fantastic job, I guess, promoting what we are doing for education initiatives in Drayton Valley. And also, it was an opportunity for us to network with some of the, I guess, like-minded individuals there who came from all across Canada. You know, there was individuals from Toronto, from Ottawa, from Vancouver, and also from all around Alberta. So, yeah, kudos to that, to Madam Mayor. Thank you. That's it for me.
Thank you very much for your report and thank you for that. Next up is Deputy Mayor Evans.
On the 19th, attended the Mayor's Gala, which I thought turned out very well. And once again, thanks to, to the staff for their, for their hard work putting that together. I know it wasn't easy, but it did go off very well. Yeah, it's always fun when you can celebrate people who are doing good things in your community and just give them that pat on the back and the recognition that so many of them deserve. Also attended the Alberta Munis Convention there. Yeah, pretty common theme, show us the money, you know. Everybody's saying, I think every motion that we made was funding, 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 funding. So, yeah, I think everybody's in the same boat that we are. We're looking for the provincial government to help us out and they're not too interested in that right now. I think they're trying hard to get their financial house in order and they're being pretty tight-fisted with funding for us municipalities, which is unfortunate. Lastly, the, yes, of course, the Truth and Reconciliation Evening, which I commented, was, yeah, a great success. Chief Littlechild was a very, very nice man, said some very nice things. Yeah. And again, the music, the vendors, everything was good. Aside from those couple of little adjustments, I think it was a raving success in the end. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your report. Councilor Sheriffs?
Pretty much same with the Mayor's Gala. I think it was a really great turnout. And the recognition of everyone that was nominated, I think, was, we got some good feedback on that and appreciation. AB Munis, like Amila said, a lot of driving around to find locations and things, but had some good conversations with the RCMP. I wasn't able to make the doing pianos for the ALS, but I heard some really good stories from that event. And then I have Western Trail Sheet Society meeting tomorrow, so I'll keep you guys updated on that. And Tora, 50th Avenue.
That's exciting. Thank you very much for your report. Councilman McGee?
Yesterday, we had the Economic Resilience Conference with the PD and some folks came. Kenmar and both Nancy and Diane were, they did a good job. If it isn't what I expected, I thought we typically were going to a development forum. Forge ahead, some economics that would be.
Oh, your mic.
In reality, it was a workshop 101 on how to get through a disaster. So we had a young lady from Jasper that was able to share her stories, a bit of what they're doing. And of course, these speakers were talking about Fort McMurray and other communities and how it's important to do that. But what it served for me is that when we talk about 80% of the work that economic development does should be in business retention, 20% in going out and getting business. And we've talked about that, but I just don't know if we're quite there yet, but I think we need to get there. And so generally, I thought it was time well spent. Had a healthy community coalition meeting where we talked about covenant health and the concerns that they have with Alberta Health Services and Covenant Health. And there's further information to come around that. AUMA, the only thing I would say is we, Krista was there yesterday, Krista Dartner. She is from Kalmar. She is the Towns West representative again. She won that. Yeah. So I congratulated her and we're on it. The fiddle music at the Truth and Reconciliation was top notch, absolutely outstanding. I just thought, yikes, how can that just happen in our little arena? If we could only capture it, right, to capture it even in a small setting. It would have been good in Eleanor Pickup. They're just terrific. And that's it. I think that's it for me.
Perfect. Thank you very much for that. Councilor Clark?
A couple of things. Yeah, the Mayor's Gala, again, was great. Echo everybody's sentiments there. Attended celebrating the Oil Country Day committee meetings. We've got some more coming up here, too, to talk about November 8th and November 14th. So that's always exciting. Alberta Munis, interestingly, I got a chat, a chance to chat with some other elected officials there. And it's funny, they all, everybody has the same problems. Everybody has the same problems. And it's, you know, it's homelessness and it's not enough funding and all those sorts of things. And, you know, I guess, you know, you look at the provincial government, you got to feel for those folks because they're hearing the same thing from everybody. Maybe not in the exact same words, but they're hearing the exact same thing. We need more money and help us with the homelessness and addictions and all those sorts of things. So just interesting. Had a meeting with some folks with Minister Jones's within his portfolio, specific to early childcare. And it was just kind of exploring some options around funding and those sorts of things. And it was very informative. I think it really helped us understand a bit better what that funding actually means with respect to increasing childcare spaces. So there's more to come on that as well. And then like Tom, attended the Community Economic Development Resilience Workshop. Yeah, not exactly what I expected either, but informative nonetheless. So that's all I have.
Perfect. Thank you very much for your report. For myself, I attended the ALS fundraiser on the weekend. It was a success. Always a great opportunity to raise funds and awareness and always a great turnout. They're such a great performance there. So lots of fun, I think, had by the community. And then yesterday with Amila, I was lucky to be part of the panel at the Future Skills Conference. It was nice to speak on our education initiatives and our zero fee tuition program through the years and our partnership with the University of Alberta, as well as being the recipient of two grants through Future Skills. So that was nice. Attended Alberta Munis Conference last week. We had a meeting with K Division. I had a mid-sized town mayor's meeting as well at the conference. I had my first oil country meeting, another one coming up on Friday, I believe. And just some prep meeting, prep meeting with the U of A and Future Skills for the conference that was held yesterday. And of course, there was the Mayor's Gala that we had on the 19th. Big congratulations to all of this year's recipients. Thanks to everyone who made it such a successful evening. And the banners look absolutely fantastic. Lots of comments in the community. Lots of people happy that they were all recipients, I guess, for the Mayor's Gala and there was no winners. And that, very proud of the banners. So they look great. So great job, everyone. Thank you there. And that is it for my report. Is there a member of council that would like to make a motion to accept both department and council reports as information? Councilman Manna, thank you very much for that. We'll move into council items. 12.2, Roundtable Discussion. Does council have any items here?
Madam Mayor, not to prolong the meeting, but one, we have a request from Diane Sinclair. I sent it this morning. It's, she's pulling together nurses and past people and it sort of grew from 20 to now it's 100. And so it continues to grow. And so the question, I think, is for some relief. She would need the Mackenzie Center for kitchen and then move over to the curling rink for their function. It'll hold about 100, but they're just looking for some relief. And I think they've talked to Alicia, who knows the request. But I'm putting it forward for us to discuss and I don't know where, how we will discuss it. But I told her I would bring it forward. That was this morning's news from that. So I don't know. We can talk about it offline. The, want to just go back to Life Church now. Life Church, there's some cement barricades and Life Church and the Shale Clinic, Shale are using that parking lot. And we've got an agreement, tentative agreement, or they're going to let us know that they're ready and they'll, you know, do the parking and do their own snow removal. But right now, there's four big cement blocks that somehow are there and they were there to sort of stop people from using that parking lot. They'd just like to have them either set up on the grass or moved so that they can actually access the parking lot. The problem that we have is that we don't own the land yet. But I, that should be a big deal to just move four blocks of cement. So the other thing that was brought to my attention by Darren Pincowski. And that Treaty 6, it will be celebrating 150 years in 2026. So he just wanted to make, so he hauled the reeve over, stood the reeve beside me and said, you guys get this organized. And I looked at him and I said, you get it organized. It's wrong, right? Well, that's, so the reeve, he was the reeve. And so I'm planting the seed for 2026, Treaty 6, 150 years. And so whether it's during reconciliation that we have that. And that's it for my roundtable.
Wonderful. Thank you. Anybody else have anything? Councilman Manna?
Thank you. We talked about garbage on Omniplex. I heard a little bit more concerns about garbage around walking paths as well. I'm not sure what kind of a rotation that we're doing or cleaning those areas. There was one area, which I've noticed, that's actually not a walking path, but on the 50th, that had a bunch of garbage for a few days and it's been cleared. Thank you for that. But wondering, you know, what kind of a rotation or how do we go about doing that, if we know?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for that question through to you, to the rest of council. I believe in the report that Shelley brought you was that garbage removal is, has been, let's say, picked up. Sounds funny, but they are on top of it better. And of course, we always invite the public to utilize the portal for specific garbage removal. If people see something in an area, use the portal that's on the website to get that request in. And we will respond to that in a fast manner. So if there's anything additional to that, I don't think at this moment from Ms. Terry. But, yeah, we're on top of garbage removal.
Thank you for that.
Perfect. Thank you. Does anybody have anything else? No? Okay. We have one information item this morning, Brazzo Foundation Meeting Minutes from the August 15th, 2024. Meeting Minutes. Is there a member of council that'd like to accept these as information, please? Councilor Sheriff, thank you very much for that. And I don't believe we have anything for a closed session. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Perfect. Then we will adjourn the meeting at 11:53. Wow.